And Mayor Jones.
Thank you. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Bridgeman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us this evening to empower us, refresh us, and enrich us so that we may work to achieve the best solutions and outcomes for our community. Lord, grant that in serving our Garden Grove community, we may also honor you. Amen.
Please face the flag, hand over the heart, and begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that takes us to presentations. We do have one listed. It's a Community Spotlight in recognition of Patty Whitcomb, owner and operator. Owner and operator of Whitcomb Enterprises, Inc. for her valued service and support to the Garden Grove community through local McDonald's restaurants.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very honored to read this Community Spotlight tonight because Patty's a friend of, a dear friend of mine for many years. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council would like to recognize Patty Whitcomb, owner and operator of Whitcomb Enterprises, for her valued service to the community through her local McDonald's restaurants. Patty, would you please come forward and stand up here at the podium? You can turn, you can either face the council or turn around and face all of your friends. In 1957, the Whitcomb family introduced Orange County to its first McDonald's restaurant at 12542 Harbor Boulevard in Garden Grove. Now, the city is home to five locally-owned McDonald's restaurants operated by Whitcomb Enterprises. For over 66 years, Patty and the Whitcomb family have provided exceptional food and service. To this day, Patty continues to practice her philosophy of giving back to the community where you do business. In September of 2023 this year, Patty awarded her employees with $15,000 in tuition reimbursement as part of McDonald's Archways to Opportunities Program, and that's a comprehensive education strategy that allows McDonald's employees to learn and grow. And since that program began five years ago, she's awarded student employees with over $60,000 in tuition reimbursement. During the height of the COVID. During the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, Patty was one of many local heroes who displayed selfless acts of service through the McDonald's Thank You Meal Program. Patty provided many, many, many meals to frontline heroes. She also hosted COVID-19 vaccine clinics at her local McDonald's restaurants where over 1,200 people received vaccinations and a free menu item voucher. After the passing of community leader, our beloved community leader, Rick Lurma, Patty graciously donated refreshments and complimentary menu items, voucher and vouchers to all those who participated in the blood drive that was held in his honor here at the city. Patty is a longtime supporter of the community, and she has helped sponsor many city programs and events, including the Garden Grove College Graduates Reception, Coffee with a Cop, Winter in the Grove, National Light Out, and many, many others. Patty is also involved with numerous local organizations such as St. Joseph's Hospital, the Sisters of St. Joseph's, and Orange County Ronald McDonald House, where she currently serves as a member of the Board of Trustees. And this is just the tip of the iceberg. So, but we have, in the essence of time, we're going to kind of just go on to our conclusion. But trust me, Patty has a huge, huge heart. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Patty Whitcomb with a certificate and memento of recognition for her valued service to the city of Garden Grove and the Garden Grove community through her local McDonald's restaurants and ongoing practice of giving back. Congratulations and thank you, Patty.
So I definitely would like to thank the council and the community on behalf of my 300 employees at Garden Grove, and most especially, my supervisor, Jeff Galrap, who's here tonight. Jay Jeff. Could not, could not do it without Jeff. So thank you, Jeff. And Jeff, also, as you were describing all my accomplishments, he enables me to do it, and he also participates so fully in everything he does in Garden Grove, most especially at Pacifica High School. So it's been an honor and a privilege to do business in Garden Grove, as you said, Maria, since 1957, because my parents opened the 11th McDonald's in the world at Harbor and Lamson, and there are now over 36,000 McDonald's located in 114 different countries. So, we're the proud owner, and it's in your community, number 11. So as you were saying, it's always been a principle of McDonald's to give back to the community where we do business. I'm a proud member of 12 families that own McDonald's in Orange County, and they all have huge hearts and are always constantly giving back to the community. So I want to thank you, council and the community, for the trust that you put in McDonald's. So it's a place where we all gather every day for food, folks, and fun. It's part of the fabric of every community. So I appreciate you. I'm grateful to you, and it's with a huge amount of gratitude that we continue to do business in Garden Grove. So thank you very much. Thank you.
And we are very grateful to you too, Patty. Thank you for being here, everyone. Okay, before we go to oral communications, I need to go out of order. I'd like to pull forward Consent Item 3A. This is adoption of a proclamation recognizing August as Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month in Garden Grove. Can I bring that forward and make a motion that we?
I'll second.
Thank you. Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, and may I ask Hadira Zab to please come forward? And Maria, if you would be so kind as to read the proclamation. Do you have it?
Absolutely, I do. This is a proclamation declaring American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month, whereas American Muslims contribute greatly to charitable organizations that help people from all faiths and backgrounds around the world by providing medical assistance, family services, scholastic supplies, before and after-school programs, food aid, and emergency disaster relief efforts. And whereas Garden Grove is home to the Islamic Society of Orange County, one of the largest Muslim centers in the Western Hemisphere, which was established in 1976, that includes a mosque and Islamic school, as well as a community of Muslim-based and operated community organizations, and several prominent Muslim figures who continue to make significant contributions as business owners, legal professionals, doctors, engineers, teachers, civil rights leaders, humanitarians, and many other notable capacities. And whereas Dr. Siddiqui reserves, or he, I'm sorry, whereas Dr. Siddiqui serves as the Religious Director of the Islamic Society of Orange County, who holds a PhD in Comparative Religion from Harvard University, a frequent participant of interfaith events, and an influential worldwide lecturer, Dr. Siddiqui continues to build relationships and mutual understanding between the Muslim community and other communities of faith. And whereas the Islamic Society of Orange County founded the Orange Crescent School in Garden Grove in 1983, which was and is one of the largest Islamic schools in Orange County, students are empowered and taught positive self-identity as Muslim Americans and encouraged to be involved with civic engagement to the benefit of their local communities. And whereas the Islamic Society of Orange County serves over 7,000 people and provides a range of programs, including youth mentorship, civic engagement, seminars, and cultural festivals, the Islamic Society of Orange County has served a vital, as a vital center during the pandemic, for essential services and resources, and has hosted a legal clinic for Afghan arrivals seeking to settle in Orange County, whereas the Council on American Islamic Relations headquartered in Orange County is the largest Muslim legal services and advocacy organization in the United States, and has been a valued partner on issues related to the census, emergency response, pandemic relief, and responding to incidents of hate, providing civil rights and immigration services to Muslims, immigrants, Black Indigenous people of color communities. And whereas it's appropriate to acknowledge and promote awareness of the myriad of invaluable contributions of American Muslims and extend to them the respect and camaraderie every American deserves. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Garden Grove, the city does hereby celebrate and recognize August 2023 to be American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month in the city of Garden Grove.
A lot of photo ops for the memories. Thank you all so much for having us here today. My name is Hadira Zab, and I'm the Policy and Advocacy Coordinator at CARA-LA, and with me today is Mr. Alam, who's the Chairperson of the Islamic Society of Orange County. And we'd just like to thank you all for recognizing August as American Muslim Appreciation Month. As the assistant mentioned, Muslim Americans are very prominent in the city of Garden Grove. We are happy to be a part of this community and happy to give back consistently, and recognizing a month like this really just gives back to the idea of inclusivity and diversity in the city of Garden Grove and just reinforces that. And so we really thank you all for recognizing August as American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month.
The only thing I would like to add is that even though today, we probably have upwards of 15 to 20 mosques throughout Orange County, the first one was in Garden Grove. And and that has been the footprint that we have expanded from, and now there are 15 to 20 just in Orange County. And a lot of the people that started this mosque have now started other mosques and have moved out to other areas and stuff. So the city has really helped us and enabled us. And in partnership with other interfaith groups, we have been a beacon of promoting peace and prosperity within Orange County, and especially the social work that we do in partnership with, for example, the Orange County Food Bank, and Laundry for Love, and many other social programs. So it's been a great joy being in the city of Garden Grove and knowing that the city council and the local government is behind us in promoting us and being in partnership with us. So thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for all you do. All right, and with that, we will move to oral communications. I do have several cards, starting with Ruby Garcia. Yeah, we'll give her a minute.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and City Staff. I'm just excited to tell you that tomorrow is Communities Come Together of Garden Grove. We're looking to see you all there. And everyone watching us at home, it's not too late to come, and RSVP. And I think everyone will be in for a good treat tomorrow. We're going to change it up a little bit, have a little bit of trick-or-treating as a sneak peek. But kids will learn how to cross the street, call 911. We've added a new station called Personal Safety in case you get lost. You know how to contact an adult, and also interacting with an officer. And then also, we're going to have lots of good resources for families to kind of visit and see what programs and social groups and sports are out there for their kiddos. So it's tomorrow here at the Community Meeting Center from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And Andy, you want to take it over?
Please join us. Us tomorrow from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Thank you!
Please join us. Please, please join us.
Maureen Blackman.
That's a hard act to follow. I think I should use a speaker system and go off a lot smoother. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. First, I'm going to acknowledge the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association's board. We rarely toot our own horn. So our board members are Stephanie Klopfenstein, Adrianne John Holmes, Susie Lurma, Jonathan Swaim, and our newest board member is Joe LaRicchia. So with that, I'd like to say we had a successful event this Saturday. Thank you, Mary Jones, for kicking this off. Senator Nguyen popped in shortly after trying to, she only had a little bit of time because she only has 500 bills to get through between now and Friday. She continues to work for parental rights, fentanyl penalties, which I think got a win this week, and working so that Prop 13 is never overturned. City Manager Lisa Kim introduced our staff and our new stellar additions, Nikki Wetzel and Ursula Luna Rosa. What a powerful team our city has. Garden Grove Police Chief Amir Afar always entertains while giving us the down and dirty on our city's safety issues. Battalion Chief Tony Espinosa gave OCFA updates, and Terry Rocco gave some insights into our schools and some of the achievements our students are making at GGUSD. I appreciated Mayor Pro Tem George Bridgingham, Councilmember John O'Neill, and Councilmember Kim Nguyen, who gets extra credit for showing up for two. Special thanks to Councilmember and GGNA Board Member Stephanie, who is constantly our resident MC extraordinaire. I wanted to thank our longtime members, new members and guests who came out in the heat to be a part of the team building in Garden Grove. Special thanks to the raffle baskets from Jenny Moore, Henry's Bar, Azteca, Ivy Cruise, and FT3, to those. On a personal note, Lisa Kim acknowledged Garden Grove's First Lady, my words, Maria Stipes, who was a rock star in her Cruzwear. She enters the next exciting phase of her life, retirement. Lisa thanked her for her steady hand and the shoulders that have carried the city for more than 26 years. Our foot words welcome y'all, especially Maria. I'm going to jump ahead of all of the goodbyes and say Maria is the epitome of grace under fire, who always has a smile and a solution. Her compassion, brilliance, and love for Garden Grove will leave a hole that will not be filled for a while. I wish her the best in her next phase, and I'll see you on the pickleball court. Thank you.
Kendra Taylor.
Hello. I'm not as formal as everyone else, but thank you for having me here. First, I want to thank you guys for everything you've done. I think the downtown area is great. I've become a huge visitor of the gem. My daughters perform there. Thank you so much for all of that. It's a really great city. I've lived here since 1968. So, anyway, enough. So the thing I would, I don't want this to come off as negative, but I live right across from Rancho, so that's the area I'm in. We do have an issue with the homes being converted to temples. And in our area, and it's, I think it's hard to speak on it because it's not a racial thing, it's not a religious thing, it's literally, it's just quality of life for people around the homes. I'm going to go out of order on all this, but, you know, I saw one of them, my parents live on Macalpine and Magnolia. Well, the one that was converted recently on Yorkshire and Magnolia that burnt down is huge. My parents don't hear any of what's going on, but I do have friends there where they have to shut their windows and doors for all of the events that go on, and they're six or eight doors away. And that happens sometimes daily, sometimes weekly. I don't, I'm not there all the time, but pretty much, most of these temples are doing that same thing. So my biggest issue is the conversion of it and having them in the residential areas. So we have churches on the corner. Dale and Orangewood has a big church. They have a big parking lot, so we've got parking issues. We have noise issues with the neighbors. And I, I am not, again, I'm not impacted. I'm more in from Dale, but I know when I called when a different home that was right across from Rancho and the Baptist Church right there on Dale and Orangewood, when that home was converted years ago, and I got the pushback, well, it's no different than having a Bible study in your home, and it's not the same. That's what, that's what, I don't know if I talked to a code person or who I talked to, but it just, I was concerned because they started the construction one way, and then all of a sudden, it's, it's this huge building, not as big as some of them. But I got pushback on it, and I really, I felt like I was being, you know, it's a hard subject in this day and age to have that. So yes, let's have people practice their religion, what have you, but have it in a place where they have the parking, and they have, you know, they're not, they're not impacting everything else. It's these, these little lots, and we have big lots, we do. But they, people build them big enough to cover the whole lot, and then there's no parking. So it's all of the neighbors. And there's another gentleman that I've befriended who sent you an email earlier today, and he lives right next door to one that's on Orangewood. Literally, you know how close the houses are, he has to shut his windows, shut his doors as well, because the speakers and everything that's happening, and people block his driveway, don't let him in, don't let him out. And they've tried to approach them, and he can speak to this more, but I just, I just think we need to do something. I don't know if it's, Garden Grove has this issue, or if it's something other cities as well, but is there something in our building codes that can limit this? Is there something that can stop people from converting these homes into a temple and then having these large gatherings? I mean, I don't know if they get permits every week when they have a gathering, or if they're now a temple and they don't have to do it. But I think we need to look at something, and I'd be willing to sit on a committee if we needed to, to look at these, because there's so many of them. In my area, there's probably like eight or 10 within a mile. So it's, it is, it is an issue, but anyway. But thank you for everything else that's done. I'm a happy citizen. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks. Good to see you, Kendra. Nicholas Dibbs. Dibbs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, I'm Nicholas Dibbs, teacher, educator. Couple of things. I want to bring this up again because it's something that, not only to the council, but also to the school district, but allowing people with disabilities who can't be here in person. Someone has a medical condition or disability, and they need accommodation, and they can't be here. There should be a provision to allow them to call in and make comments. So can somebody, you know, Joe, and maybe Kim, and George, and John, and Cindy, Mayor Jones, get it on the agenda, please? I mean, I'm here, yes, but not everybody can be here, and you can put a limit, how many people can call in, but we need to have, give first priority to those who can't be here in person, who have a disability or medical condition. And then others who want to be, put a limit of five or 10 or however many. And once you get to that limit, that's it. So that's the first request. The second thing is we do have Blue Light Awareness Day and Month coming up. So not everybody has the blue light protection on the screens or wearing the glasses that have the blue light filters. So it's affecting the brain of children and other people and young people, and everyone's spending so much time on their smartphones and computers. So blue light protection is very important. The high-energy waves of blue light penetrate the brain and cause problems, especially among toddlers and young children. You can learn more about this on my website, dibsdigitalwellness.org. dibs, D-I-B-S, digitalwellness.org. Now, this is the first time I heard you're leaving. When is your last day? The end of the month. Okay, so to Maria Stipe, you're a doll and a dear, and you are just have been just really helpful to me and to other people. We're going to meet you. We're, I'm sorry, we're going to miss you, and we're going to look forward to meeting you when you come back as a retiree. So you're too young to retire. Anyway, so, and to Maria, to Maureen Blackman, thank you for having the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association event. I'm sorry I missed it, but I am a member of that association, and it's a good group of people, even though, they're a good group of people, let me just say that. So let's, let's please put it on the agenda, so I don't have to keep coming back here and asking the same question over and over. It's a reasonable, fair request. People want to be treated fairly. Why can't you allow someone who has a disability who can't be in person to call in and also open it up, you know, if you put a limit of five or seven or however many you want to do? So first priority are the people that have a medical or disability. The second would be anybody else who gets on a list and they call in. Improve the civic engagement. Thank you for listening. Have a good day and a good evening. May God bless all of you in the city of Garden Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on any matters not listed on the agenda? All right, we will move on to Successor Agency. So we'll recess City Council and go to Successor Agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call Roe?
Member Bridgeman?
Here.
Member Tran?
Here.
Member Dovin?
Present.
Member Klopfenstein?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair O'Neill? And Chair Jones?
Here. All right, we already did oral communications, consent items, just receive and file of the minutes from August 22nd. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from Successor Agency members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn back to City Council. We'll reconvene City Council. That takes us on to Consent. We already did Item 3A, so it's recommended that 3B through 3N be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All righty, public hearings, we do have one listed, and this is Item 4A.
Item 4A is adoption of a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority as conduit financing for the Garden Brook Senior Village Project located at 10080 and 10180 Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden Grove. at 10080 and 10180 Garden Grove Boulevard, Garden Grove. And Monica Kovarubias is here to give that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We are here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. TEFRA requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of the jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that the governing body approve the proposed financing. On November 14, 2017, City Council approved via a resolution a request by Garden Grove Pacific Associates LP to obtain tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed $150 million to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of a 394-unit senior multifamily rental housing project located at 10080 and 10180 Garden Grove Boulevard in Garden Grove, California, to be known as the Garden Brook Senior Village. Garden Grove Pacific Associates LP is seeking to extend the maturity date of the bonds, thereby triggering a re-issuance of the bonds and another TEFRA hearing. The California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA, is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt issued by CMFA is the sole responsibility of Garden Grove Pacific Associates LP, and the city has no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city. The city will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. This is a private loan with the borrower and their bank. It is recommended that the City Council conduct a public hearing to receive and consider public comments and adopt a resolution approving the issuance of bonds by CMFA for the benefit of Garden Grove Pacific Associates LP. Such adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of TEFRA, the Code, and the California Government Code, Section 6500. City staff, as well as representatives from CMFA and the developer, are available to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Monica. Any questions or comments from, questions from staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing item, so I'll open it up. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular item?
Mayor Jones and members of the council, these have come up in the past, and I am assuming that it includes a provision for some sort of low-income senior housing, is that correct? Anyway, I'm hoping that the project has some, has that in there. I don't know, I don't know all the details, but it, we do need more housing, and so whatever can be done in that regard, so I would be in favor of it, but I just would ask that the council, if you don't already know, if you could, or let the public know, is there gonna be some sort of provision for low, low-cost senior housing? In any case, we have a shortage of housing in the, in the community, and in the city, and in the county, and in Southern California, so I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Well, okay, we'll close the public hearing. Yeah. And just to clarify for the record, this is the Garden Brook Senior Village Project, which is already constructed, and I believe it's 396 units of affordable senior housing already completed.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion, just, you know, a quick comment. There are some issues still that haven't been resolved with the property in the construction related to the Boys and Girls Club and Kiwanis Land. They'd put a light standard in the middle of the parking lot of the other property instead of up on their property, and now the garbage truck can't get to the garbage cans. They restripe, they stripe things wrong, the grading's not right yet. So, anyway, with that in mind, I'm hopeful that they'll be cognizant to fix those issues in a timely manner. I mean, it's been a while, and they still haven't done it, but with that being said, I do support it. As the Speaker said, we need more senior housing, and this actually, 300-plus, 390-plus units was awesome. Got rid of that old ISOR, so we're really good with that. So, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. We are moving right along. So, we're to matters now. We actually do have two different matters listed. So, we'll go on to 5A, and this is a discussion regarding naming the new Civic Center Bridge in memory of Garden Grove Police Department Corporal Han Cho, as requested by Mayor Protem George Bradigan.
Yeah, thank you. So, basically, as, as this issue came by a couple of months back, and Councilman Dovean said, you know, there'll be an appropriate use for this, and there'll be an appropriate, and he was right. I think, you know, unfortunately, we lost Corporal Han Cho, and, you know, it was tragic for our entire city. It wasn't in the line of duty death, it was off-duty, and unfortunate, and so he won't be memorized, memorialized on the Fallen Six platform. And I thought it would be appropriate to go ahead and name, have the bridge as a memorial, to serve as a memorial for our community, and for the police department, and for his family. So, that was my idea. I'd like to agendize it so we can actually vote on it next meeting, and so that's basically where I'm at. Well, that, I, yeah, I guess I could...
Yeah, go ahead and make a motion to agendize it as an action item for next meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Right. We can't take action on it tonight.
To put it on the calendar.
Correct. I mean, this is just to agendize it for action at your next meeting.
Yep. Okay. Great.
Do we have to vote?
Yep. We have a motion in a second to agendize it as an action item for next meeting.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Great. And that's probably all the discussion we should have on that one tonight. Agendize it, and General Counsel is giving me a funny look like we should move on.
Yeah, one more item.
All right. Item 5B, and this is a discussion adopting a proclamation recognizing September as National Dog Service Month, as requested by Councilmember Klaffenstein.
Thank you. I know we all have a yellow sheet, and it shows the proclamation in its entirety. This kind of came about from an event that Steel Craft here in my district had a few weeks ago called Dog Fest. And not only was it an opportunity to eat food and bring your dogs, and there was entertainment and a lot of fun ways to celebrate all things dogs, which I love to do, but all the proceeds and a lot of the reasoning behind it was to celebrate and to bring awareness to canine companions who provide service dogs to disabled community. And we have residents here in Garden Grove that benefit from this organization and have service dogs. And one of such people happens to live near me, she's a neighbor and a friend of my parents. And so she was there at Dog Fest that day, and I know that her dog means a great deal to her. It's a huge part of her life, and I got to learn more about not only this organization, but just how integral this dog is to her day-to-day life, and that we have other people in our Garden Grove community needing the same kind of love and attention that these dogs can only really truly provide. So, this is just a proclamation that would allow us to sort of adopt September as National Service Dog Month. And so I guess this is also a discussion to vote to put this on the agenda for, I guess, the next meeting. I know that we're kind of coming to the latter part of September, but I still think it's, it's worth trying to get it on there if we can.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Great. Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right. We will go around the horn.
Sure.
MPT.
Just, you know, actually, a couple of things. I have, I just want to give a shout-out to the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association for putting on a wonderful event, community event. They have their annual meeting in Maureen Blackman's backyard. Good food, good people. Councilwoman Stephanie Klaffenstein, she's a member of that board, Maureen already left, so I'll, kudos, kudos, kudos for that event. And, you know, we had a large turnout, people from all over the city, and, you know, it was really neat to see a lot of faces from everywhere, basically. So, I recommend everyone join that organization. It's a great organization, and it really does provide a lot of help and insight for the council when we need to bounce ideas and that kind of stuff, so. My next item, I want to talk about, you know, our Public Works Department does an awesome job for the most part. They're always on top of things, but I guess my gripe is with the street paving. You know, when it comes to doing the main roads, we're really good at it. We keep things up pretty well. Once in a while, you know, there might be a pothole, but they get out there and they fix it, and they do, you know, even some of the bigger ancillary roads, they usually maintain them pretty well. But when it comes to the residential streets in our city, the small streets that are going where our houses are, they're just terrible. I mean, we've got some, and, you know, that are, I mean, it looks like black sand beaches in some of them. Some of them have potholes, you know, you know, five, six inches deep. And so, you know, when I first got elected, I heard about this rotation where they go around the city, and they rotate, every five years they go, they focus on another part of the city, and, okay, that, that sounds like it would work, but it doesn't seem to be working. And so I'm, I'm gonna really just task staff with coming up with a better way of dealing with our residential streets than what they're doing now. The rotation is a good idea on paper, but it's just not working. It's just not working. You know, I go through John's district, and there's roads that are bad, my district, I've been through Kim's district, I've been through most of the districts, and you see these, you know, the roads themselves, the main thoroughfares, Euclid, Chapman, they're usually in really good shape. But, boy, those residential roads are really getting bad. So, I think, you know, this was the very first time that I'm aware of that the council put infrastructure as one of our main focal points, and rightly so. And so I'm really hoping we can pay some love to our residential streets. And my last item has to do with code enforcement. So, four years ago, we tasked the city manager in a 7-0, or I'm sorry, the city attorney with a 7-0 vote to come back with a ordinance where we could take care of blighted commercial In four years, we still don't have that ordinance before us. We've not seen it, we haven't heard anything about it. I'm gonna say our code enforcement, they're out there huffing and puffing, they're doing their job. When they need to cite a resident, it's not an issue. It gets done. But, boy, when it comes time to cite a bad business owner, and we do have them in our city, we have plenty of bad business owners. They're bad actors, they don't care about our community, they let garbage accumulate in their parking lots, they, for some reason, we don't cite them. We let them get warning after warning after warning, yet the person whose bush is a half inch over the sidewalk, they get a ticket right now. I think we need to start looking at actually enforcing, you know, if we need to come up with an ordinance, we haven't seen it yet. It was a 7-0 vote, given the city attorney direction, four years ago. We still haven't seen anything. So, I'm hopeful that we'll see something soon, and that we can start addressing some of these commercial properties and businesses that they're just letting garbage accumulate, and apparently, there's nothing that can be done about it. You know, we complain, the community complains to us, we complain to staff, and, eh, okay, we'll give them a warning, we'll give them a warning. Well, when it's a resident, we cite them. So, anyway, I'd like to encourage staff to come up with a solution to this problem. It's citywide problem, it's not just any one district, we all have the issues. Most of our business owners are very good business owners, they care about their workplace, they care about their community, but we do have a few that just don't, they just don't care. So, anyway, I'd like to task staff with coming up a solution for a little more timely remedy on, on those issues. And that's all I have for tonight.
Sorry to go out of turn, but just before you go, I just wanted to piggyback on something you just said. And I don't disagree, we've got a lot of residential streets that need work, we've got an aging infrastructure throughout the whole city, and limited resources to cover all that. Paving is super expensive, and especially when it's not just a re-slayer, but when you actually have to grind and dig and, and fix streets, it's crazy expensive. And just, kudos to one thing, I noticed this week near Magnolia and Orangewood, Desmond and Marshand and whatever neighborhood got completely repaved. It was a class act-looking operation with a bunch of trucks and proper notification and signage and stuff that I heard from neighbors in there, that they got in, they got out, they got it done, and that neighborhood looks wonderful now, right? Yeah, so, one neighborhood's, you know, feeling very happy today that they have nice, shiny, black new streets, and you're right, there's a lot of work to be done there, but we've just gotta stretch our dollars and map it out and figure out how we can. It's, it's, yeah, right. It's, it's insanely expensive asphalt, this. You wouldn't even believe it. Okay, John.
Okay. So, on a happy note, George, happy future birthday coming up here, so.
I would put you the wrong birthday, because you have it on your...
Oh, yeah. There's my daughter's...
Well, his son has the same first name, and his, his birthday's the same month, so I guess, so just a couple of items. So, I apologize, I was absent at the last council meeting, but I was in Sacramento kind of talking to legislators on the end of their session, and a lot of bills that are, have a lot of impact on our local folks here. So, I, I got to talk to probably a dozen elected officials during a couple of days, Monday, Tuesday, and half a day Wednesday, when I was there the week of the last council meeting. So, I was there doing that. There's a lot of important bills that should pass, there's a lot of important bills that shouldn't pass, you know? It's kind of scary. For me, as a local elected, I like the local level, but these state, state laws really impact us here at the local level, so we have to all have an input there. So, please, if you have an issue on a certain bill, or whatever, you know, please call your, your state legislator, your senator, your local assembly member, your city count, you know, notify your city council member of your area, the mayor, and the city, so we know what, what you want us to convey to them. But I did meet with a lot of people, and there was a lot of good stuff that happened there. Next, I, I, at that council meeting, it was my, I kind of made a business trip, and then in my anniversary, so I wanted to wish my wife Sylvia a happy 37th anniversary. We've been together over 38 years, yeah, yeah. And without her, I couldn't do all the things that I get to do, that I love to do, to help people and do things in the community. So, without her, it would be impossible, and she stuck with me, so thank you very much. And with that, I think I'll close it out. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Cindy?
First, I would like to say thank to the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association for having me at the event. I get to meet several of the residents in District 3, and they raised some concern, or some issue about the homeless, and cost violation, and also the safety, where you get out the little street, and there was car that parking blocking your view, and so there were a couple times that almost accident, things like that. So, thank you for raising your voice, and I will have a meeting one-on-one with our city manager to go over some of the concerns and see what can we do to take care of some of those issues. Second, earlier, we did the voting and approved all the concerned items, but there were one item I just want to have a note, that's either 3G relate to the second, number two agreement with the Foley. The original amount was, I think, 49,000, and then now we have to pay another 28,000, which is more than 50% of the original amount agreed to. The good thing is that, because our city staff was sore, and we need to approve and get things moving, you know, concerned that the mayor, Protem George, mentioned in the past about how long it takes to get approval, and so it go quicker, but at the same time, my concern was that how can we control, like, this is because it, kind of the invoice came after, so we didn't know, or, I want to get more information about the hour that's spent, and how come it take that so long, like, so much, and if we have a control over that, or nobody looking at that. So, I already talked to our staff and city manager, and Lisa will give more information on that. Next item is, I want to say thank to Ms. Pam Hadat for helping with couple issue with the homeless and the trust. So, what happened is a couple residents in District 3 raised the issue that there were trust and homeless people were in the back of their yard. When we brought it up to our staff, we said, okay, that area belonged to the cow train. Our staff reached out to cow train, no one respond, and so, make a long story, sorry, I got impressed, and they were already taking care of. But when I talked, the resident contacted me again, said, no, no one did anything. Pam helped me with contact the cow train, and we actually got somebody respond and take care of that. So, I know that I talked several... So I know that I took several try and Pam actually follow all the way to the end, so thanks to her. Last item, I just want to say shout out to Chief Covey for coming back from Hawaii. Yeah, so I get to talk to him a little bit, he was there for 10 days and he was leading the effort of rescue and he said, I mean, you have to hear the story from him, how people lost their home and this at a working level that they lost everything. And we, when he told me the story, like, it just kinda make you want to cry just because of the people have to go through it. And so, but regardless, he was there, you know, represent our city, just helping out the people there and he backed safety, so just want to shout out. And that was it for me.
I also want to point out a couple of things on the consent items, which we voted on, but we got a lot of details from our agenda review, which I want to share with you. One is the item 3F, the approval of 15-year bus shelter license agreement with clear channel outdoor, and that is a very well-constructed agreement for clear channel to continue to provide services around our bus shelters, which does need some maintenance and upkeep. And over the contractual period, we will get the upgraded maintenance that we need, so that I look forward to seeing our bus stops in better condition, as well as our advertising revenue from there, which will be, help offset the cost of the maintenance. So I've asked for the list of the advertisers and the rates be provided to the council and mayor, so we can have that and to share with the public if anyone's interested, but that's definitely an item that I'm very happy about. Also, we do have some work around town on the roads in terms of slurry seals in certain streets, and I've asked for a list of those, and we have been provided, a list of streets that will receive some slurry seal. So that's good news. We do have a bit of a surplus and thanks to the previous councils, well as this council, we do have a healthy budget. And I'm happy to share that we have also passed in a consent item, 3I. And what's couched in 3I is that we have internally promoted some staff to positions of deputies. And this I called for when I first came on board, that is internal promotions. And thank you, city manager Lisa Kim, for making it real, making it real for our staff, sharing our surplus to give these promotions to the deputies. And I congratulate all the deputies who will be subject to more reporting, such as Form 700 and so on, so they have to disclose any conflict of interest, just like the rest of us who are elected. So that's a very good development and thank to our human resource department and our city manager for making it happen. And again, I congratulate all the new deputies and I look forward to that kind of succession planning, so we always have a very prominent and prestigious pool of experienced leaders that can help us run the city long after we're still on council. So that's very good positive development and because we voted on it as a package in the consent items, I didn't want to miss that point to share with the public. This week, I and councilwoman Cindy Tran went to We Care for Humanity event, which everybody was invited to the Royal Summit. What makes it royal? It's a humanitarian organization, nonprofit, that's been in operation for many decades and I personally know the then-princess and now-queen, Miriam Amor Torres Matsura. So she knighted me, actually, so I am a humanitarian worker for peace and I'm proud to share that with the rest of the city. And Cindy was there to give out a lot of commendations to people from many different countries who were recognized for their contribution to humanitarian causes. So I want to thank the We Care for Humanity organization that held the event here over the weekend, particularly they were at Golden Sea, which is one of our businesses in Garden Grove. So thank you for having a presence in our city and they also held events in Anaheim and Santa Ana. I also want to speak a little bit to issues that we're having coming up with temples. And we had a, one of our residents share that concern, and believe it or not, this issue has been around, you're not the first one, and not the only one recently raising it. And so it is of concern. And I'm all for religious freedom, obviously you welcome these activities, but I do agree that some zonings or maybe requirements, so that not every house can be turned into a temple or have events every day or every week, even every month is a lot, if you're a neighbor. So we are well aware of that. If our council wishes to tour some of these temples, maybe I can introduce you to some that has been around and some are very good operators and some not so good. I have to be honest about that, they have code enforcement issue, they have noise nuisance issue, they've had fires, they've had robberies and crime committed on their property. This is like the resident that spoke up, it's not about being negative, but it is about looking into issues that is recurring. And it's gonna be some long-term solutions, it's gonna take a lot of courage for us to work through it, but with compassion, we'll get over it. We'll be able to surmount the challenges. But this, I want to speak to the people who are in our community, who are starting or operating these temples, house temples. They need to be more considerate of the residents who's been here and whatever activities they're engaged in, they need to be a good neighbor. And not everything's gonna come in front of the city, not everything we can have a solution to right away, but we all need to tolerate each other and get along and find a way so that we can all enjoy peaceful enjoyment of our property and our neighborhoods. So I thank you for the resident that spoke out. We have received other emails and we also thank those who have voiced their opinion. It's definitely on our list of to-dos and I will personally work with residents as well as temples to try to solve some of these issues that will come up very regularly, I'm seeing now. Lastly, I want to speak to our Korea trip coming up. So I've been there 10 years ago and I was the spouse of then-councilwoman Dina Nguyen, who was standing for Mayor Broadwater when he couldn't attend all the events. And I will share with the other three council members who will be attending the Sister City with An Yang trip, that it's an experience of a lifetime and we will learn a lot, make a lot of friends. We're gonna be singing for the mayor of An Yang, so get your vocal cords warmed up. And he'll be treating us to, you know, some very good Soju and Lisa Kim has to brush up on her Korean. She's printed us up some business cards with the Koreans on it. I've received mine, I hope we all receive ours and I've got pins to distribute as a gift and so on. But we will report in full when we come back from Korea. It's been 10 years since any delegation from Garden Grove has gone there and we look forward to them coming to visit our city, too. So with that, I will close out my part of the matters tonight. Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Stephanie.
Just quickly, thank everyone for the support of the GGNA Annual Meeting over the weekend. I think it was a great event. And ultimately, at the end of the day, it's just an opportunity for our city staff, our council electeds and the community to come together, break bread and just have a conversation. And that really is what starts, I think, and sparks the ideas and the potential for change and creativity in our city. So it was a great event and I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. First item I have is, again, to mention the increase, continuous increase of graffiti from Clinton to Roxy along Westminster, the back wall of Antojito's Restaurant, which is a primary wall for Enterprise, is significantly graffitied almost every day as soon as it's painted over. And I can imagine that Enterprise is very frustrated with having to deal with that as customers are coming in, so if we could look into that, as well as the liquor store right on Clinton and Westminster. The other issue I have been getting complaints about, and I just think is an eyesore, I know has been a difficult problem for the city, is our Euclid and New Hope empty lot. The weeds are now taller than I am, so we need to get back on that property. And the other issue area is the underpass on Garden Grove Boulevard close to OC Vector Control. Folks are sleeping underneath that bridge area, they're blocking the sidewalk, they're jaywalking, and so we need to keep a closer eye on that particular area, that's an everyday issue now. On a positive note, I want to give a shout out to Public Works for their repairs of Harbor south of the 22 in preparation for the grand opening of the first hotel south of the 22, so I'm very excited and that street is looking beautiful. And happy anniversary to my future husband.
City manager Lisa Kim.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I want to thank you once again for really joining the reception that welcomed our new Economic Development and Housing Director, Ursula Luna Reynosa. So thank you again for coming out to support and really to our business community for us introducing her to our business community and providing support for that. Lastly, I wanted to just share a quick announcement later on, later this afternoon or earlier this afternoon, we received notification from the Business, Consumer Services and Housing Agency dubbed BCSH, or the California Inter-Agency Council on Homelessness. Our city applied for a homelessness grant and this is our second submittal. So our first submittal was for a request for four million dollars and we did not receive that request. Our team aggressively submitted a resumittal within a two-week turnaround time and I'm pleased to report we received a grant of 1.92 million dollars to help our homeless services and resources program. That will include resources for our navigation center, our SRT team, street outreach and BeWell. So we're very excited to administer this program and kudos to our team. It is our newest homeless liaison analyst, Kristi Lee. She is a bundle of energy and she was not gonna give up on this grant and she worked alongside with Sergeant Jeff Brown and Tim Thrall in securing this grant resource, so we're very thankful for that. Thank you.
Awesome. Kudos to Kristi and Timothy and Jeff Brown and all that worked on that. That's an amazing piece of news we got this afternoon. General counsel, anything to report or any need for a closed session?
Yes, mayor, we do have two items for closed session for the city council and we have one item as the Garden Grove Sanitary District. And for the record, I will be recusing myself on the sanitary district matter. One of my partners is general counsel for Midway City Sanitary District and that causes a conflict for me. We do have outside counsel that will be presiding on that case.
Thank you. So one moment, please. We will adjourn to closed session, but before we do, we're actually closing tonight's meeting in memory of two different beloved people in Garden Grove, starting with Corporal Han Cho from the Garden Grove Police Department. Corporal Cho proved himself as a dedicated police officer who gave 28 years of service to the city of Garden Grove. He was recruited in 1995 from the police academy and during his career, he worked as a patrol officer, was in the gang suppression unit, career criminal apprehension team and neighborhood traffic unit. He was a member of the hostage negotiation team for over 24 years, rising to the rank of master officer in 2006 and then corporal in 2022. He was known for his warmth, professionalism, dedication and great attitude. His life was cut tragically short as a result of a traffic accident and he will be deeply missed by his family and friends and those who worked alongside him. Han is survived by his parents, sisters, brother, niece and his son Christian and daughter Now may I ask my dear friends Tam and Lynn to come forward? Hi, guys. We will be closing tonight's meeting in memory of Min Nguyen. Anyone familiar with Garden Grove knows about Advanced Beauty College, which was started by Min and Kian Nguyen and ultimately became a beauty school empire and legacy of kindness and love. A former Navy officer, Min and his hairdresser wife, Kian, arrived in the US after the fall of Saigon in 1975 with little to their name, but a big vision for their future. With many from Vietnam having minimal English skills, Min saw an opportunity to teach a trade to help Vietnamese refugees transition to a new life in America. In 1987, after success with beauty salons, then Wynn's opened their first beauty school in the heart of Little Saigon. In 1999, brother and sister Tam and Lynn took over the family business and for over two generations, Advanced Beauty College has gone on to graduate thousands of students. A pioneer in the industry, Advanced Beauty College's rise to success has been featured on Fox News, CNN, BBC America and countless local and international publications. In addition to this national attention, Advanced Beauty College has been the recipient of many awards honoring their leadership, innovation and especially commitment to giving back to the community. Min Nguyen gave so much and provided so many opportunities to his community and on behalf of the Garden Grove City Council, I offer my very sincere condolences to the family and friends of Min Nguyen. Thank you for being here for that. All right, thank you. With that, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you.